Hello, hello! We're gonna start off a little quicker here than normal today, just so that I'm not making Bethany wait any longer. Bethany is currently standing behind me playing Diablo IV and assisting in sound checks, because I launched this game earlier and it nearly made me deaf permanently. Um, but yes, we're here with the one-off. We're here with the Points Redemption one-off. The fantastic Sir Techno Ghosty redeemed a one-off for Aliens vs Predator 2010 game-based reboot... Remake, something of the 1999/2000 game made by Rebellion Studios? Which I actually just looked up. Apparently that's the same Rebellion Studios. Apparently owned by the company that owns the Judge Dredd comic franchise. Like, that publishes the 2080 comic book series. Which is amazing! Like, that's such a cool thing! Like, I love Judge Dredd and 2080 as a franchise. That's cool. Ultra Goldsmith, hey, you made it! How's it going? Welcome! We're here. We're here for Aliens vs Predator. Um, as a bit of background for this, I have never played any Aliens vs Predator or Alien vs Predator. I'm not entirely certain what the pluralization should be. I'm not 100% certain how many Aliens vs how many Predators we are dealing with here, uh, within this game. Um, I'm actually not... I only first got into like Alien and Predator as a franchise in like 2009. So like, relatively recently. I love Alien. Alien's one of my favorite, favorite movies of all time. It's fucking fantastic. It's one of the best horror movies ever seen. And Aliens is a fantastic like action schlock sequel. Um, but I've actually never seen Alien vs Predator the movie. I've never played any of the games. I didn't realize this existed. So we're gonna dive in today, because Techno Ghosty redeemed this. And I went and picked up and played like a little bit of it, and I was like, "Oh my god, this is fantastic." So, I am Alien... Alien vs Predati? I think it'd be Predators. I'm... I am fairly certain that the plural of Predator is Predators. I don't think it's Predati. But we're gonna dive in. There's apparently like... Three different campaigns? You could apparently play an Alien campaign... Wait, Predator? This is a Predator mission? Oh, that is a Predator-ish skull. And then you've got like the Alien missions. Predopods. No, no, no... Oh no! Aliens vs Doctor Disrespect. Oh no! Oh god. Alright, well, we're gonna, we're gonna move right back on in. Marine missions. We're gonna... We're gonna purge this vile Xeno's filth. Um, Bethany, if you would not mind sticking around for just a second, because I do recall this being absolutely deafeningly loud. And as a fair word of warning to anyone who is watching this right now on headphones, it may be worth holding for just a moment or like removing your headphones, just in case this gets deafeningly loud in a second. I would, I would, I would not wish to send anyone to the hospital with permanent ear damage. The game is quite loud right now, so maybe turn it down by volume mixer. We'll find out in a second! We'll, we'll hit the normal button. Okay, one sec. I wanna turn this to here. How bad is... Oh, it's very bad. Oh no!
Sir, I'm ready to begin.
How old do you think it is?
I can't turn it down. It's too late!
10,000. 100,000.
You're all doomed!
Yes. Begin the breaching procedure.
We're locked in, boys! Bit loud. They're whispering to each other right now. Just you wait! Versus General Hammond? For the Stargate reference. I've never seen Stargate. I've seen Stargate the motion picture. It was absolutely terrible. I'm guessing we're gonna need to turn this down a little bit. I love that screenshot so much.
Coming in low and smooth. Still nothing from the surface?
Cool. Wait, hold on. Can I, can I get into the... Oh god, I say, I skipped something. Okay, I'm sorry. We're gonna need to go back and re-watch that, but we're gonna, we're gonna do it with the volume adjusted. Let's just try using the in-game settings. Does about half sound good? That's about half of the overall volume? Okay. We're gonna, we're gonna try that again. If I hit restart mission.
Coming in low and smooth. Still nothing from the surface?
Does this seem about fine?
Understood, Marlowe. We're...
Like, is this not overly loud? Okay, good. Okay, I'm assuming that that is a Predator ship, because the aliens, I don't... Xenomorphs don't use spaceships, right? Like, that's not a thing. Why is their spaceship using dial-up? Because it's aliens, man! They all use like bullshit 70's technology. That's how aliens work. Yeah. That's the whole like schtick. Like, Alien sci-fi is always like bullshit 70's technology, but they made it to space. Like, if we went interstellar with the Apollo program. Okay, so we're on like, oh, oh... We're heavily concussed. Got it. We're on like a dropship. Okay. Concussions build character. Okay, so they're aware of the xenomorphs existing? Oh, I can hear the motion detector bleep. Your character is an ophthalmologist. On fact, with the original xenomorphs used, they originally supposed to have an extremely short lifespan, so they could be dropped on a planet, wiped out any life form there, die of old age if they exterminated, exterminated anyone. I might not have... Word that... Oh yeah, no, no, I get what you mean. Is that... Where was that from? Because like, I know like in the original Alien, there wasn't like, I don't think as much plan for like, um, like sequels and stuff? But then they've like massively expanded upon it since then. Like, there's the, um... What's the newer movies? With the, with the engineers? That, they like during the, the release four, they were like, "It's not an Alien movie. It's just an original film by Ripley Scott. Don't, don't worry about it." And then it was just like blatantly an Alien film? Uh, T to use flashlight. Okay, hold up. We're good. Flare? Eh, okay. Original script for Alien is the Xeno just kinda dying? You see, I thought like in the original that the xenomorph was just supposed to kinda be like a... It's like the terror of the unknown and then, and how horrifying space travel was as a concept. And that, you know, like... There's, there's no, there's no escaping or, or killing it. And then they like made it into like an action schlock for the sequel, for Aliens. That's why, that's why I like Alien better than Aliens, because I think Alien is more of just this like... God-space is truly a terrifying concept. What happened if I shoot that? Oh, I, I can't shoot. Uh-oh. I have no bullets. Do you mean sort of lifespan? So why he's like... Oh, okay. I thought he was just dying because like he hadn't eaten anything. I suppose it's possible. I have no, I have not read up as much on this. Like I said, I'm relatively uninitiated. Okay, I can fire my weapon now. Do I need to fire my weapon? Activate alternate fire with mouse two. Okay, that alternate fire is just fire three times. Okay, that's, that's on fire. Backup. I went to the bar and they were playing... Yeah, that's true. We went to the bar tonight after work and, uh, they had Aliens, uh, on the TV at the bar. Oh? They didn't have Alien, which is, is my preferred Aliens film. Alien, because Alien is a horror movie and Aliens is like action. Queen of the Damned, that's irrelevant. It's true. It is irrelevant. One thing I did like about this, from the little bit I played of it... Alien's so good, I agree. From the little bit I played of this, this actually feels more like Alien than Aliens. Like, it's got that horror element, like... Like, you got your motion tracker going already. It's all dark and spooky. Like, this is gr- I honestly was not expecting this game to be as tense as it was and like... No, it's super tense, which is great. Gotta figure out what you're on about with Mephisto. Yeah, 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 yeah. Go, go figure out Kay Hagan. Kay, Kay, Kay Hagan. That's the, that's what I'm on about. I'm on about Kay Hagan. Oh god. Look at this! Look how dark this is! Like, outside of my flashlight, it is just the void. And then there's a box like a foot in front of my face. That's terrifying! That cardboard box is scarier than like most horror games I've played in recent years. I decided, I love it. Yeah, no, this is great. I like this kinda... I like tense. I like, I like good tension and then like the fear of the unknown. And this game seems to get that. That's why I like Alien Isolation so much, because I think Alien Isolation really nails that like... Creepy unsettling tension that you get from the, from the Alien film. Into the atmosphere? Yeah, I agree. Like, this also must've come out like based on the same engine? Jesus Christ! I have the volume at half. God? Oh, Jesus. There's like a giant hole in the ceiling. That was one of those good, nearly the same games as this, but adds more creepy vibe. Okay, cool. Cool, cool. My god, voice logs are apparently just like broadcast directly into your brain by God himself. That's really loud. Why is that so loud? Yeah, see? That's what I was talking about! Like, I'm playing this at like half volume. This is my... Remember the other day when I was streaming this and I messaged you and I said that like, "Oh my god, this game is gonna blow my speakers out when I'm playing it"? Like, if I turn it all the way down, does this affect it? Yeah, it does! Look, that made that quieter. Just for, just for a frame of reference here. This is how loud that's supposed to be. Why? Why would you need that to be that loud? Like, that's a gunshot right there. Oh my god. Okay, we're gonna turn that down again. Good lord. Turn the voice volume slider down to one. Yeah, we're gonna see if the other voices are that loud. Jesus Christ! Okay, wait. I think he's done. Like, like that's a gunshot now. That's perfectly reasonable. It's just when like whatever that, that voice speaks to me is, it's just like boring directly into my skull. Kay Hagan. I was looking up like Kay... Kay Hagan. Which sounds maybe like a Dear Abby writer. No, no, Kay Hagan. I have like... Okay, we're good. We're good. Where do I need to go here? Okay, we've got like mid 2000's first-person shooter cover stuff. Oh, Jesus, that still just fires auto-fire. Okay. There isn't like an aim-down sights button. Got it. Oh, I don't like this. Like, I have a pistol in this, which is better than I'm doing throughout most of Alien Isolation, and this is more unsettling. There like a crouch button? Okay. Nothing in here. Try C. I've tried C. C's not doing it. What's... Okay, you know what? We'll consult the controls. If I configure controls, I customize the keyboard controls. Uh... Nope. No, we stand upright and walk directly into hell. Uh, what, what, okay. Hold up. As long as we're in the, the video settings and everything, let's just... Just real quick, make sure that everything is as good as it can be, except for the volume, because we don't wanna turn the volume up. Auto-center off. Alien auto-transitioned. I don't know what that means. What a strange setting. Alright, I think the rest, that's fine. Just shoot that box. Okay. Middle-click and alt are punch. Okay. What are we doing? Okay, it says there's motion nearby. Okay. All my game volume's like at half, because of like the loudness. I have acute hearing. It's kinda easy turning everything stupid through those, it doesn't hurt my ears. It's funny hearing how loud this game is. Yeah, this game is deafening! Like, this is again at half volume. Hey. If you need it lower too, just let me know. I can lower it down. Oh, no, 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 no. See, she sounds like she's fine. She's not deafeningly loud. What's happening? Oh god. That's not ideal. I think I'm like almost dead. Okay, we're good. Jesus Christ. Feels worse here somehow. This must be the place. All Diablo franchise summarized in one statement. That's true. Diablo as a franchise is just... And then it got worse somehow. Oh god, there's more of them. Okay. So it is Aliens, not Alien. Good. But it did say Aliens vs Predator, as in there is only one Predator. Only thing to combat the Xeno is the flamethrower, even then it was more to scare them. Notable pistol can kill them. I mean, I guess if you shoot them enough times. They didn't try that in the first Alien, because they weren't armed, because they were like a mining ship. It's like they just rigged up a flamethrower with some like bullshit that they had laying around the mining ship? And you get into Aliens and like, you know, they're like, "Okay, if you bring like, you know, armed military, you can just shoot them and they die." Choose not to speak on the Predator thing. Well, clearly, it would be Aliens vs Predators if it were a... If there were multiple Predators. I don't write the rules. Drop is shaping up worse than Akron. Am I supposed to know what an Akron is? Do I need to read all the 1990's comic books in order for this to make sense? Oh no. We're doomed. I wonder if those were published by Rebellion? Now I wanna know. One Predator. Good. Excellent. He's gonna be like a boss. Aliens vs Predator. Um... I feel like I should open this door. Right? Do I, do I not wanna open this door? Like, they sound like they're having a really bad time up there. Oh, hey! Which level is the Board of Education on? It's like the final level. It's the final boss. Like, the final level is set in Topeka. Okay. Then Megan's gonna say his head pop with a pistol. It's true. That alien exploded. Granted, he also, the first one I ran into did almost kill me, so I can't say too much. There's not movement ahead of me. I'm picking up movement behind. Wait, why is your cackling laughter? Is this Doom? Am I also fighting Satan out here? Okay. Locked out with no power. Oh... Don't worry about that. Also, yeah, that like, the Alien motion tracker bleep is just so threatening. Oh, it's so good. And the fact that it's like horrendously unreliable. Like, that's a great decision by the devs to make the motion tracker immediately establish just like horrendously unreliable, where sometimes it just goes off and nothing is happening, other times it doesn't go off and there's something standing right next to you. Okay, pulse rifle. That's better. Opening a Stargate, apparently. What does your armor say? Does that say "Give War A Chance"? Okay. We're going somewhere. One, two, and three switch between weapons. She dies, it might just be deserved for stupidity in that statement. That's true. He's a little clumsy. Here you go. Bye. Okay. I'm gonna try out my pulse rifle. Give me an Alien to shoot. Oh, this thing sounds awful. Oh, okay. So they've still got the molecular acid blood. Got it. So standing in their blood is bad. That's good. John Lennon is rolling in his grave. That's true. I'm not gonna lie, this pulse rifle doesn't sound great. Like... It's a little underwhelming. Like, this is okay. That pulse rifle's, it's, it's a little weak. It needs more bass. Oh, wait. What? Shut that music off. Speaking of bass. Sounds awful, I can't refuse the original sounds of 2000 game, I can't comment, oh, I haven't played 2000 game for sure. Am I hearing a nightclub? Are, are we able to fight aliens in a nightclub? Recreation block F, Club Eden Bar and Grill. They resolve their differences and they're getting down in the nightclub, I mean, it's, kinda sounded like it. Wait, the aliens turned off the music, so they must be near, oh my god. We've got alien strippers. I just, I want a pole dancing xenomorph now. What have we got here? If someone hasn't modded that, I'm gonna be very disappointed. Cortana in the strip club, let's go. Master Chief would be very upset with this. I think we're not... I think I'm intentionally not going to play the audio logs. Because I think they might be what's really loud. Oh my god. Man, I'm not in the dark. I'm in an active nightclub. Oh god. Hold up. Okay. We're good. We're good. I mean, honestly, so far I feel like we're doing remarkably well. One alien is like, a genuine threat. Okay, we're good. AVP mods unfortunately know queen names, you know stripper mod. Well, that's shit. What is the modding community even there for? Can you play as CJ? Survive the party at the club, okay. There, there's an achievement, and proof that I have not played much of this game. Okay, what are we doing? Hold E to interact, okay. Live mods is a games category, mostly enhanced aliens co-op campaign, oh, that's cool. Fill this more atmosphere and remove the splash videos at the start of the game, that, okay, fairly standard stuff then. No pole dancing xenos. How disappointing. Okay, activated some kind of sentry gun. Okay, what are we doing? We're gonna let my allies that have unlimited bullets deal with this. I'm gonna repeal it if you guys said anything at all in the past half hour with the horrors. I think the concussion may have damaged his like, speech center. Like, it's entirely possible that my guy's not verbal at this point. Oh no. Okay, activate turrets. We're good. That guy's going into the ceiling now, goodbye. Okay, we're on our own, maybe we should maybe move into range of the turret. Oh, he's a fast little fucker, isn't he? There's a lot of them, oh god. Looking with pistol has infinite ammo, that is true. How's my ammo looking on this thing? I have forty-one bullets. Got grenades, oh! We should maybe make use of some grenades occasionally. There we go. Nah, we're fine. It says they're over there. What am I supposed to be doing? Oh? Okay, we're good. I think we used grenades. It's probably what Zeno has for. Friends! Okay. Well, they're all dead. We're good. If there's one thing I've learned from Alien films, is that you can just win by shooting them enough. This is definitely a sound strategy. Head for my objective, wait, my objective marker's moving constantly. I think we're good. Okay, we're good. Oh wait, that's the objective over there, oh, I see. Hold up. Jesus Christ, okay, it's just a... Stim hack, okay. You were so lucky, yeah, I think I almost got pinned there and killed. We're good. We're fine. Ooh. Casually stroll over, you just, don't worry about them. They're fine. They're just, they're just the friendly local fauna. Look, it's more of the friendly local fauna. Okay, wait, 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 wait. I need to remember, this game remembers that aliens have acidic blood. Spoiler not entirely spoiler, it's cool because the Zeno story takes place exactly here, oh really? That's cool. Yeah, I'm not worried about spoilers for a fourteen-year-old video game. I'm not playing aliens versus predator for the plot. I'm playing it for the pole dancing xenomorphs, clearly. I like that they actually remember that they have acidic blood, like, a lot of Alien franchise stuff tends to forget about that. And you can just like, get their blood, wait, press Q to for, oh my god, are you kidding me? Q to sprint? What fucking gear is this? Ooh, bind sprint to Q. Oh god, oh god, oh lord. Oh, my nipples. Wait, continue marine? Wait, I died? How did I die? Wait, did I not die, was it the end of a mission? Okay, wait, I think we're good. We didn't die, that was just the end of the mission. Okay, okay, this is back in the days when like, first-person shooters have like, missions, that have like a, an end screen. Got it. I have to remember which, uh, which era of first-person shooter I'm living in at the moment. We're good. Okay. Do you think there's any like, like a pulse rifle around here somewhere? Because I can't help but notice that they got rid of my pulse rifle, I appear to be holding like, some kind of futuristic equivalent to a Desert Eagle. Which is like, good, oh. All the dogs out here are not friendly. That's a cool shot, oh, this game is super cinematic, I am, I am. So they're doing the like stencil shadow thing, which is a big trend from like Doom III, of the like, super, super high contrast like, lighting and shadows, which I love, I think Doom III was like, excellent, at the like, pitch black versus light thing. And this game does it honestly even better than Doom III did, granted it came out, you know, six years later, so I would hope it did, but, like, yeah, that's great. That, that, that's super, super like, just pitch black darkness is something that modern video games don't do, they wanna, they wanna try to be more realistic, so they should have like, you know, like, gradient darkness, where like, you'd be able to see some faint outlines in front of you, and like, no, screw that, give me complete pitch black. Let's save the planet one, one pixel at a time, and turn off all of the, the power going into my monitor. Okay, we're good, we're good. We're good. Until it's on me, because it's been a bit bastardized a little because of that, they've made it brighter, so it looks more realistic, yeah, yeah, like, I don't, I don't want that. Like, fear of the unknown is, is what's terrifying, so give me the unknown. It's something that I think the Silent Hill remake did super well, is that like, it keeps the stuff that you're not supposed to see, not seeable. Which is how it should be. Okay. It's creepy, but is there like, stuff back here? Oh, there's a, there's another audio log. We're gonna be skipping the audio logs, I'm gonna tell you right now, unless the audio logs are telling me where to find xenomorph strippers, I'm not listening to them. I'm sure it's cool, like, world building and all that, but like, I'm just doing a one-off today, we're not, we're not here for like, full, the full AVP experience. Oh, that's weird, why are there like, crosshatched lines in the sky? I can't tell if it's like the skybox breaking, or like, if there's like, heavy air traffic. If you ain't directed me to Zeno strippers, I ain't interested, else I redeem another AVP stream, that's true. I mean, I am enjoying this, I'll say that, like, this is super fun. It's, it's not what I would necessarily call a horror game, because it's, it's like Doom III, where it's like, it's an action game, it's a shooter, but it knows how to do horror elements well, and I, I respect that, I like that. And this seems very faithful to the source material, which I, I like. I'm, I'm honestly impressed at how good this is, I would not have expected a like, movie tie-in game from 2010 to be this quality. Granted, I guess this wasn't necessarily a movie tie-in, because like, the original Alien versus Predator game from 2000, like, the year 2000 slash 1999, wasn't a movie tie-in, because the Alien versus Predator movie didn't come out until years later, it was based on the comic books. wasn't a movie tie-in, because the Alien vs Predator movie didn't come out until years later, it was based on the comic books. I suppose it's technically more of a comic book tie-in game, that also has a movie that ties into it. So good, I love this game. I believe it. This is super good. I, I am genuinely impressed at how fun this is. I'm annoyed that I didn't know this existed. Ooh. Hello. Oh, is that a shotgun? That's a cool looking shotgun. Uh-oh. No, 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 no. Is it dead? Oh, I don't trust that. Oh, I don't think I'm gonna... I, I don't like spiders, I'm horribly arachnophobic. And facehuggers look like spiders. And I suspect that I am not going to like this bit. Aww. Little noises they're making. I know there's one out here, because I can hear it. Okay, bring the power back. Sounds a little more horror theme. That's true. Walk wide around the egg. Ah. Nope. Put this away so I can get my gun back out, please. Not much scares Alex. Throw... Oh no, you have to... You could rob me with a spider. Like, if you just had like a spider in a jar and you like put your hand in the wood, like you were gonna like release it, I would turn over my wallet. Like, 100%. No, no questions asked. I, I do not like spiders. Oh, okay, I don't like this. And these are like, like spiders that were like specifically engineered to be terrifying. And they're little, which I don't like. Like facehuggers, like in real life, I've seen like the props, I've seen replicas of the facehugger props, and they're like enormous. They're huge. Like, they, they look comically large in person. These ones are little, which is like, ooh. Are you dead? I think you're dead. Yeah, like that one's like, maybe two-thirds the size of what it should be. Ooh, I like the, the, the shadow of your character, that's cool. You know what another game from like this era that I should stream at some point is, just because it's a phenomenal horror shooter, uh, is Fear. Like the lighting and the shadows in this are reminding me a lot of Fear, and Fear was absolutely excellent. Hey, survivalist, how's it going? You wanna survive here? I don't even know what planet we're on, to be fair. Oh god. First time, first time playing this? Yeah, absolutely. I have never seen this before at all. This was a, uh, points redeemed from Sir Techno Gosi here. Uh, they, they used their, their channel points to redeem a one-off, and they picked this. And I, yeah, I've never played this. I love the Alien franchise, so I am having a great time. I mean, I'm having a terrible time, because this is horrifying, but like, that's exactly what I want out of an Alien game. My nightmare. Very good expenditure of points. Um, I am on... Uh... Normal, I think? I think I just picked normal. Granted, I have also almost died several times, so... Is there, can I see the option? Like, can I go into options? Is there like a game? No, there isn't. Yeah, I think I'm just on normal. That's okay, though. It's my first time playing it, I'm fine with normal. I don't think I need Nightmare right now, that's fine. I want to be able to show some of the game anyways. Okay, we're good. Well, this is cool. Wait. That's not what Alien blood looks like. How are things? Things are good, honestly. I mean, I've been sick most of this last week. I don't know if you caught the stream yesterday at all, but I've been sick like basically for the last week straight. You can probably still hear my voice sounds a little, a little messed up, a little froggier than normal. Um, and I'm just kinda getting back to normal here, so now I'm trying to catch up on stuff that I wanted to do for like Halloween. God, this game is gorgeous. I, I am honestly impressed with how cool this is. I'm annoyed that I did not know this existed before now. Playing all three races is amazing. Yeah, I'm actually, I think what we might do... I don't know how long these campaigns are, but I'm going to assume that they are not like short enough that I could probably beat one of these in like two or three hours. We might go back at the end of the stream here, like when I get bored of this, and go take a look at the, uh, the Alien and the Predator campaigns. Just to see what that looks like, because that's, this is really cool. It's honestly super faithful, like the kind of vibe and aesthetic that I would expect out of a, like playing as a colonial marine. Get off the wall, yo, Becker. And like, yeah, like most like tie-in licensed franchise games from this era were honestly like garbage. They were total trash. So I honestly never thought that any of the like Alien games would have been like particularly worth playing, because like in the, in the early to mid 2000s, anytime you saw like a movie turned into a video game, you could just automatically assume it was gonna be garbage. Like, without fail, it was just gonna be trash with like, maybe Star Wars being one of the only exceptions. And even that was like kinda hit or miss. But this is really good. Oh wait, I don't have my pulse rifle. Ooh. This would have been what, like Xbox 360 probably? How did I not have? I had an Xbox. Ooh, there we go. Okay, we got the pulse rifle. I will say the pulse rifle audio sounds truly horrible. Like, god, that's awful. It sounds like a compressed sound file from the original film. Like they just like punched in a VHS of Aliens and hit record while somebody was firing a pulse rifle. But like, while holding a tape recorder near the TV that was playing the movie? Like not even directly capturing the audio. It, it, it just, it sounds awful, which is, it's a real disappointment, because like, the pistol sounds great. And all the other atmospheric stuff in this game is just fantastic, but... Oh shit, I forgot that's how you throw a flare. That's not how you turn on the flashlight. We're good. Flashlight is T, obviously. Pressored gun or silencer from the original 1999 or 2000, whatever, the rifle sounds horrible. Yeah, it doesn't sound like a pulse rifle. I don't know. Maybe I haven't watched Aliens with the sound on in a while. I, I, Aliens is not my preferred... Wait, what? Alien franchise film to watch. I prefer Alien, if I'm gonna watch something from Alien. Oh god. Oh god. Oh god. Release me. Okay. This is fine. I'm out of ammo for everything but my pistol. This is totally fine. Here, want to walk off the cliff. Ah. Aliens can't kill me if the cliff kills me. Tactical thinking. Is there any ammo over here? No, okay. I definitely could use some ammunition. Like, any kind of ammunition. That's an audio log. That doesn't kill xenomorphs. I'm gonna rely on the little like glowy boxes showing up around anything that might contain ammo. So far, there has been like a little, you know, indicator anytime there's ammo on screen. Yeah, like this. Okay. Keep reloading. Hit that reload up to 100. Okay, we're good. Reload this. Got an explosive barrel there I can detonate. Sorry, hacking 101? There's a hacking mini-game? I, I wasn't expecting that. Okay. Okay, we're good. So not really a hacking mini-game. More of like an objective. Got it. And I didn't walk off a cliff. No, that's true. Also, oh no, my horribly delayed, do you, survivalist? Was the cliff bit just happening? Oh no. Minorly delayed. Uh-oh. Okay, that's actually, if you're responding to that already, that's not too bad then. Not that delayed. Okay, good. I was worried you were still back on the, the outdoor bit, and I was like, dear god. They sent you to another time zone. Aw, man, this is gorgeous. This art direction is fantastic. Are those god rays coming off whatever that is down there? God damn, that's cool looking. The cliff bit, you walking back from Xenos and edging towards the cliff. That's true, that's true. Sounds like I was worried they were still back there, I was like, oh no. Oh, I thought we were gonna have to go through here. Okay, let's get moving. Um, Gosi, I don't want to ask too much in the way of like spoilers, because I'd like it to be a surprise if it's supposed to be a surprise. Is playing until I reach some Predator content a reasonable goal to set for the human campaign, or is that like six hours in? Like is this all Aliens, no Predators for like the first fair chunk of the game? Campaigns aren't overly long in general. Okay, cool, cool, cool. I was like, I might be, like, I'm gonna play till we see some Predators, and then we'll check out the other campaigns too, just so we can see a little bit of like all of the content this game has. Oh my god, that is so creepy that you can't reliably see where they are. Are they gone? They give up? No, my, my motion tracker just sucks. Right, got it. Okay, we're fine. We're totally fine. Aw, this is, this is great. Aren't they full stims? Oh. I hear you bleeping away over there. Okay. Took the layout of Doom and ran with... Yeah, no, like this definitely feels like Doom 3 inspired, which is great. I love Doom 3. I know a lot of people like, are like, oh Doom 3 is the worst Doom game. I think it's fantastic. I've actually, I have it installed right now with some like really nice mods that like double down on the lighting effects, make it look just gorgeous. It's like Doom 3 with Doom 3 resurrection of evil, and yeah, like... Super cool. I loved that game. Did not deserve the hate it got. And yeah, you can definitely see the inspiration that, uh, this game took from Doom 3. Granted, again, this game came out six years later. I actually wouldn't be surprised if this was like starting development around the time that Doom 3 was like peak popularity, which would have been around 2004, 2005. Ooh. Alright. Yeah, I'll take a flamethrower. So I only get three guns, but... I'm not gonna lie. This doesn't look particularly much more hive-like than any of the other million spots I've found to date. Yeah, no, we're not gonna swap weapons just yet. Hey, what's up, buddy? Hi, buddy. I'm over here. Probably cut him down. Oh, okay. I feel like there's probably more dialogue there, but like, I agree. Okay, aliens are supposed to be a little more trepidatious around flames than this. As a sort of general rule. They don't much care for flame. It's one of the only things that humans have going for them. Oh, I'm dead. Oh. Got it. They don't explode either, that's true. They're not supposed to pop like that. Oh god, that's bad. Nope, okay, this is bad, okay. We maybe need to come to this from a different angle. Oh, wait. It makes you finish the reload animation before you can swap weapons. Oh god, well, I'm dead again. Wow. Huh. Okay, I'm thinking this flamethrower is kinda shit, I'm not gonna lie. Yeah, I think shotgun is just a better option. Oh yeah, no, no, no. No, 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 we just... Yeah, shotgun is the superior option. Hold up. How about the flamethrower? Just give me the pulse rifle. Pulse rifle and shotgun. My one true love. I thought I picked up some kind of grenade. But I don't... Okay, hold up, wait. We've got like a controls menu here. Is there a grenade button? Primary fire, secondary fire, flashlight, blah, 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 blah. Nope, okay, got it. Smart gun is, oh yeah, I mean, the smart gun's gonna be amazing. Only on the pulse rifle. Yeah, okay, that makes sense. I thought I saw when I talked, right before I talked to the whoever that was that I set fire to, that I picked up some kind of flamethrower, but maybe I was wrong. I might have just been misunderstanding the UI. You know what? Speaking of grenades, I don't have any. Unfortunately. Beautiful. Think we just stick with the pulse rifle and the shotgun for now. Flamethrower is underwhelming. Oh, that's so creepy. Oh, and it did exactly what I was hoping it was gonna do, which is disguise an alien. Oh, that's so cool. Because they did this in the movies too, where they'd curl up along the walls in spots that looked like an alien already? So you wouldn't actually notice them until they moved. Aw, that's so good. Which means they're gonna be doing that all the time now, and I'm never gonna know where the aliens are. Like that one. Bad kitty. Okay, we're good. I mean, I think we're doing fine, to be honest with you. Like, considering the situation we're in, I'd argue this is like almost an optimal outcome. Alright, you know what? Hold up. Don't pass up stimms on the ground. Grenades. This is fine. This is totally fine. Think we just cross over to the other side. Move my way on out of here. So so far, in the aliens versus Predator game, I'd give this like a 9 out of 10 on its like alien presentation. We haven't gotten to Predators yet. Okay, this is a slight problem. Do we run in terms of missions? I don't. The one with all the aliens in it. Beautiful. Loading station's dead ahead, should be able to see it. Okay, wait, we're gonna get cutscene. Oh god, is that an alien queen? Art. Aw. Okay, these aren't actually that dangerous initially though, right? Oh, until you blow them off the wall. Why does it look like a husk? Like, it looks all like withered. Yeah, I'll say all mino or something. It doesn't look right with it. Yeah, we're fine. I think we're fine. Think we stopped wasting pulse rifle ammunition on facehuckers. No, don't forget about the eggs. Kill everything. Because there's like ammo around here. You're just leaving. It's just sitting around here for free. Okay, I think we're good. God, you're weird looking. Alright. There we go. Oh god. Okay, act like a thing. Hit small enemies, like Aryasaur, stupid bloody fleemen drive me insane. Oh god, yeah. I hell yeah have plans for the old Castlevania games. I'm playing Portrait of Ruin, one of my favorites, just got a PC release. I actually have never played Arya or Aryasorrow. Okay, I just finished Mission Refinery with a rating of captain, and we are 12% story progress. Play as alien, play as predator are still options. We're gonna keep playing until I see a predator. And then we'll try playing as an alien or a predator. That makes sense, right? Oh god. Aw. Well... I mean, we technically just saw a predator. I was playing Circle the Moon initially, chat said, "No, play Aryasorrow, it's better," and I did, and they wasn't lying. Fair. If you get the Dominus collection eventually, I highly recommend Portrait of Ruin. Portrait of Ruin is some peak 2D Castlevania. Okay, so we've got a predator out there now. Where is he? Okay, I like how they're handling the predator so far. What is this? Sniper rifle? Okay, it's a... Ooh. Chat said about Dominus 2, asked if I wasn't playing that. Yeah, I mean, it just came out. It came out like a month ago. It's the newest one, and it includes all the DS games, and yeah. Portrait of Ruin, quite good. It also has Aryasorrow, which is like the sequel to Aryasorrow. But whatever, all the 2D Castlevania games are great. Like, no judgment here. I respect any 2D Castlevania game. They're all fantastic. I'm annoyed that I missed that, why? Because I've been having to fall asleep before you start streaming now. Oh god. The new work schedule has not been as lined up with your streaming schedule, unfortunately. Oh. We've got the delete xenomorph rifle. Got it. Gameplay of Arya, blue magic system of Soma is cool. Yeah, that's true, that is true. They actually, they kinda brought that over in what's the not Castlevania Castlevania that EGA made? Bloodstained Ritual of the Night. Kinda brought that same, a very similar system over. You can definitely tell that, like, yeah, he was influenced in this. He was sprint. Oh, that's true. I had forgotten, I had literally forgotten. Like, genuinely, completely, completely left my brain that that was a feature. I don't know that I need it all the time. I don't like how large and open this is. I know how Predators work. He's gonna take a deal streaming with Kick. Oh god. Oh. There was something that stepped in the water. Or was it just dust from that tree? Okay, maybe it's just dust from the tree. Maybe I'm losing my mind. What the fuck is this? I don't like that I don't know if I'm being hunted. That's the worst part right now, is that I'm not sure if I'm even being hunted. Okay. So fucking tense, you're on edge about the Predator top shit. Yes, exactly. No, I agree. Like, the Predator's whole thing is that, like, you're being hunted, and when you're being hunted, when you're prey, like... This is how you gotta act, man. You gotta watch your six. Move slowly and carefully, act like a rabbit, watch for movement. No, it's that thing. Okay, it's that light. We're good, we're good. They've done a fantastic job with this. Now, I'm waiting to see if when we actually engage a predator, if it completely undermines this, because generally, I would consider one predator substantially more dangerous than like one xenomorph. Like, to an honestly laughable degree. Like, one predator should be able to take on like a lot of xenomorphs without too much of a problem. Okay, we got a bunch of bunch of eggs. Bunch of eggs. I think it was what I said originally, there was a tweet saying Alien where they found Dallas in one of those infested Alien walls and they had to kill him. Really? An Alien in the first one? Huh. Interesting. I didn't know about that. I was like, I thought the whole like... Infested wall thing... Yeah, I did miss that, sorry, yeah. Thought the whole infested wall thing came around just in Aliens. No kidding. Like, Aliens tend to lean more into the like... Action-y side of things. And the more in-your-face horror, whereas Aliens was just like... Creepy unsettling. All the time. Okay. Press button. Act complete.
Tom to hitch that ride home.
Okay, why didn't you just like land here? Okay. Opening scene where it's panning around the ship interior, fortunately, things come up, pitch black, can't see anything, so good. Oh, for sure. I didn't realize that movie was from 1979. I thought that was like a mid-eighties movie and that Aliens was like a early nineties movie? Like, 1979 is... That's fucking insane. Like, it looks so good. Okay, if I get a... Shotgun, we're gonna swap it for the flamethrower. Although I did notice, I think the flamethrower's alternate fire is you can just spray, um... Gasoline on things? Which might be useful. You can just like coat an area in gasoline, just set a trap and then like ignite. Actually, let's, let's test something. Can I like... Spray that? No, that doesn't work. But I can just... Set a fire like that, okay. I need something better than this flamethrower. Okay, where is the Predator? Wait. Are those just Fireflies or are those the little seeker drones? We're staying away from them just in case. I don't trust that. Okay, we've made it to here. Where do you want me to go, game? I'll go AFK for like 10 minutes, uh, fill me and I'm gonna get back, for sure. Ghost team at AFK shortly before I got eaten by the Predator. Got it. Press button. Find a way to escape the swamp. We're good. Aquatic aliens are no threat. We're just gonna sidestep them. Back to the wall. Just keep moving around the edge, everything... Get out of there, you little freak. Something spit at me too, huh? We're fine. Okay. Also, this music's kind of reminding me of like Halo Combat Assault music, which is kind of what I'm liking. Oh god, oh god, oh god. We're good. What is this? God, we've got glowing beehives out here. I think we're good. Yeah, okay, that's dying. We're getting the Among Us music creeping in here. I mean... I feel like I'm starting to get the hang of this. Power node. Power node to control building. I don't seem to have any way to, uh... Melee or pull out a gun or anything right now. You got it. Totally trustworthy administrator lady. Beautiful, okay. Act. Hello? Oh... That shot came from that direction. I mean, they're hinting at the Predator. They're building it up sl-... Slowly. Which I approve of. Rather than just like... Blam, it's all Predators one level. No, I'm going to fight it. Okay, we're good. I was like, I think I can win. Besides, if there's one thing the Predator movies have taught me is that they respect someone who stands up and fights back. Predators want a challenge, not a coward. Okay, what have we got here? There's the Marlowe. This was the wreckage of the ship that we came in on, right? The big ship. Must have been like a skate pod or something. There's no way that's the whole ship. Alright. Oh, interesting. Okay, so Carl Bishop Wayland headed the Wayland Corporation. I was wondering if the Wayland we saw in that cutscene was supposed to look like Bishop? I'm guessing that, yeah, the implication is that they designed the Bishop model androids to look like... A previous director of Wayland? Okay. Said there was movement up ahead, I'm not gonna lie. Not really seeing it. Can I access this gun? Huh. Like in the jungle drums, that's pretty cool. But where's the Predator? Movement. Is this more Aliens? I don't wanna fight more Aliens, I wanna fight the Predator. I've killed a lot of Aliens. I'm tired of shooting Xenomorphs. Let me shoot a Predator. What the hell? Where'd you come from? What are you? Okay, a bunch of my buddies, but like... Oh, they're androids. Who's Carl? Wait, aim for the limbs? What is that, dead space? Okay. For a way past the debris. Well, continue for now. So we're getting... Combat androids. Yeah, whatever, we'll stick with this, it's fine. Feel like we gotta be getting close to fighting Predators, right? Oh, goddammit. More Aliens. But they're running away. Okay, hold up. Ow. It did the like horror sting, but like... There was nothing on screen when it happened. Hello? We're good. We're fine. Okay, just keep moving forward. We made it. Hold up, we're buzzing. Why am I buzzing? It's a message. Got it. Okay, we're good. Sniper rifle. Let's head into this... Ancient... Alien ruin that has a Wayland Utoni... Code lock on it. Question mark. Are we good? That alien. Oh, oh god. Oh, please sir. Is that speaking? Oh, it's androids, okay, right, right. Combat androids. I didn't think it was Alien vs Predator vs Combat Androids vs Claudia Marines vs Brown vs Board of Education. There's too many versus in here. Oh god. Oh god, okay, wait, this is gonna be a problem. Okay, they're all like behind cover. How do I deal with this? Move up. There's one over there. And one over there. Flank. One down. Two down. More of them up top. Oh, Jesus, okay, that just instantly killed me. Okay. Alright, 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 I see this. Flank around the, Jesus. Okay, now we're dead. Okay. Got it. Um... I don't know how to deal with that. Nope, okay, we're dead. Got it. Huh. This is interesting. Okay, back up. Pop back up. There's another one up top. Wait, he's up there. Okay, he's on the ground. Take that as a success. Okay. There was still one alive over there. Oh, maybe it's dead now, okay. Alright, hold up. Okay, we've met friends. What is this? Ooh. Smart gun. This is great. Okay, this thing's awesome. Yeah, okay, cool, just kinda keep this aim in the general direction of a bad. Hold the trigger down, no more bad. And it melts stuff. It melts stuff pretty good. Reload. What is the, uh... Okay. Yeah, beautiful. Keep moving, get to the dropship. Okay, where we going? Going up this way? Okay, I can't sprint while I've got the smart gun. Honestly, reasonable. Okay. Now what? Killer chinchilla. Do I have any ammo for this thing anywhere? Or are we just running low on ammo for this? We just have to accept the smart gun is a limited use scenario. Alright. Okay, I like that. Come on, let me kill him. Fill me in. Um, we made it to a control thing. Then we ran through a swamp, then we found some Marines, and then I got a smart gun, and then I shot a bunch of aliens. And then I watched the Predator rip that guy's head off. The end. That's, that's where we're at. And now I am, uh, briefly acquiring additional munitions. Just to, just to make sure we're all good. See, we've got like Predators around here. I haven't gotten to kill a Predator yet. I wish to kill a Predator. I mean, we're definitely getting into like I'm being actively hunted territory. Which I like. Okay, we're good. Weird chimes in the jungle. Yeah, this is good. Like I said, this is what I want out of a Predator. However, I wish to shoot a Predator. They're still just making me shoot Xenomorphs. Which is okay, you gotta build up a little bit. Like, we gotta establish that a single Predator is significantly more dangerous than, you know, a bunch of Xenomorphs. If we're gonna do the Predator any justice. Okay, we're down here. Oh, god, game, what are you doing to me? Think I'm slightly lost, and I'm not sure where the game wants me to go. Which isn't isn't the right kind of tension. I'm not letting my guard down. Back in 10 minutes, real chat time was 11:09. Nearly half an hour. Oh, you're good, whatever. You're gone for as long as you need to be. This is just Alien vs Predator, it's not going anywhere. Literally, there's an archive VOD that'll be living over on my YouTube channel for the rest of eternity. Okay, wait, I can go into here. Yeah, 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 I think that's segwayed nicely. I mean, I'm like up top. Now what? Okay, I genuinely don't know where it wants me to go. Kinda undercutting the tension here. Marine partner, yeah. Wanna go this way? Nevermind, sounds like he might be dead, yeah. Here we go. Game, I would like to argue that we have established the threat of the Predator. Have a look in the Oh my god, this is Doom. It's Petruger. Hello? Alright, here we go, here we go, here we go. We're good, we're good. We're good. More vulnerable when it retreats. Oh, come on! Alright. Maybe back up a little bit. Spray and pray worked. I think he's dead. Oh, neat, I could use explosive traps. Okay. I mean, I like that the first Predator you fight is like a boss fight. As opposed to just like the aliens. I'm going to guess that means there is more than one Predator though. Cause like otherwise, they really just kinda kinda blew that pretty early on, didn't they? Okay, we'll make it to the next chapter mark, I think, and then we'll check out the Alien and the Predator campaigns. See what those look like. I'm impressed with this, 15 bucks? This was a good deal. This was well worth 15 dollars. Uh, already at full stim, so how can we heal? Not at all. That said, I'm actually hoping that the Predators stay about as difficult as that. Like, I hope the next Predator you meet isn't like... Doesn't have like half as much health. Cause like, no, like that's about how tough they should be. They should be super difficult to kill, and can take like an absolute pile of punishment. Oh, xenomorphs. Did Mrs. Give War a Chance die? I'm honestly not sure, to be honest. To be perfectly honest with you, I have not been paying terribly much attention to the human characters in Alien vs Predator, which is... Part of the reason I never followed the Alien vs Predator franchise too closely, because like... Look, it's the least interesting person in Alien vs Predator, and the most interesting person in Alien vs Predator. It's something that I think a lot of the like... Alien vs Predator, Godzilla vs King Kong, you know, that kind of movie does wrong, is that they like... They always feel like they have to give you a human character to follow along with, so you can connect to the story, and like... I'm not here to connect to the story, I'm here to watch two monsters fight each other. Okay. Like, I don't need a sympathetic human character in this story to enjoy it. Oh my gosh, are we actually getting an interesting story here? Okay, I think this is Mrs. Give War a Chance right here. Where'd she go? Okay, let's just get out of here. The horror things are so funny in this game, cause like, half the time I'm just not looking at what they're expecting me to be looking at. It's like, huh, it's like, oh, there's nothing, I was looking at a wall game. I'm terribly sorry, the textures in this game just, you know... Held up really well, I've been admiring them. Okay. Where are we supposed to be going? Wait, she's placed an objective marker on my... How did she place an objective marker on my heads-up display? Okay. Oh, there's a lot of them. I see. Hey, hey. Ah, there. Check my phone, I think it's me, or is it lagging, about your buffering, anyone else having that? Uh, I don't know. Funny, funny thing, looks fine on my end, but that's because I'm playing the game live. We'll see. Oh god. It's like, I'm not getting any notifications about any like... Stream issues. But it's not always great about that, so... Research lab. Okay, we made it to the end of this. I think I'm gonna call the end of the human part there for now. Let's try playing as an alien. Just to see what that's like. Okay. Thanks for checking. Oh, so they're trying to catch them as they burst out of their chests? Oh, that's terrifying.
That's the last of them. Commencing specimen retrieval.
Okay, how is this gonna go horribly wrong?
Uh... What happened to specimen six?
Hello? Yep, purge that shit. Okay, correct choice. That guy's smart. Okay, that guy's an idiot. Oh, that's Mr. Bishop. Wayland, Wayland Bishop? Bishop Wayland? Okay, so he's raising a path alien, is that me? What? I'm not listening to this guy. Bye! Oh god, oh this, oh this camera, oh god! All the field of view is... A bit much. Hold mouse 3 and walk into a... Oh, god! Control's a bit weird, it'll take a while to get used to. Yeah, I would say that. Oh god! Oh god, I can't see what's happening. Hello? Okay, we got like... Hello? Sir? Why am I so short? Like, I'm only up to this guy's like, waist. Oh god. Oh, I'm choking to death. No, no. Close in! Hello? Kinda crawling around, yeah. Okay, left-click repeatedly. Oh, the field of view's a little much, the fisheye lens is a bit much. Crouch in dark... Wait, create dark places to hide in by damaging lights by holding mouse 2 near them. Oh, can I just like smash them with my tail? Oh, that's cool! Crosshairs inverts to show you're in darkness. Left shift to have an enemy and directly attack them. Whoa! Okay, this is kinda goofy. Hell if a human betrays its nature. Stronger their scent, the greater the danger they pose. Health split top if damaged. R to hiss and lure an enemy towards me. Okay, hold up, what if we go like... Nice, okay, we got him. Okay, what are we doing? Escape. Queen has given you an objective. How do I get into there? Spacebar to use that, okay, I see. Huh, okay. I don't know that I did complete escape, but... It's interesting that he's talking to Six like it's intelligent. Most humans don't do that. I like that "excuse me." Surely, Six's hands can fit through those cuffs. Yeah, it feels like he could, pretty easily. Oh, actually, I don't have a reason to kill this guy. We'll let him live, I'm joking, I'm not gonna let this guy live. Ah, that's not gonna happen. Oh, this is cool. Okay, that was a little goofy. Well, that was cool. Okay, get across the ceiling. Get after him! Oh, this is cool! I like how like, autonomous the, uh, the tail feels. Like, it just automatically lashes out and catches onto people? That's actually really cool. Oh, this is cool. Yeah, this is super fun, okay. Surprise! Alright, yeah, this is fun, I'm liking this. It plays way different too, which I like. Cause it should, it should play different. Okay, that's a little stupid, the fact that you use their like mouth to open all the buttons. That's kind of dumb, but, whatever. Okay, we're good. The mouth thing for the buttons is, is a bit stupid. Ooh! Oh, this is why she was all like, damaged! Bring this free. Look at us go! We're good. Okay. I like that. And then, last thing we're gonna take a look at here is we're gonna take a look at the Predator bit. Um, just to see what that looks like. Uh, pop over Predator, hit Normal. Let's see what, let's see it playing as a Predator Alien. Or Predator, not Predator Alien, that's a different thing. Probably not in this game. Probably shouldn't have existed, but that's okay. And after that, I think I'm gonna need to call it apart, because I am getting pretty tired. Are we just, are we just in? Trials begin now, young blood, prepare yourself. Before you begin the trials, scan the area. True hunter always faces hunting grounds before engaging, yeah? You're ready, look in the direction of the elite overseers. I see you. You just went up there. You went up there. The hunt begin. These serpents are our most worthy foes, they show no fear, no remorse, no mercy. Predator Alien isn't this game, oh my god! Okay. That's a little goofy. Predator Alien was a weird idea, I don't know that I'm a fan of that, woo! Ooh, I like that you just automatically go into a leap there, that was cool! Lows 2 and- Okay, we can block. Oh, and I appear to be immune to their acid, which is nice. Fast light attack will cut through an enemy's heavy attack. Spam light attacks, got it, you can attack enemies from a distance. Highlight an enemy. Okay. Oh, I ripped out its, like... Mouth, mouth. Health is shown on the bottom, health can be restored by using health shard if one is available. H to heal you, you need at least one health shard. I don't know how to tell how many health shards I have. Located above my health bar. You can hold 3 shards at a time, I'm not seeing any indication of any health shards. Like, the health shard from plasma canister, okay. Marker top screen shows the direction of my next objective, got it. Yeah. Oh, I see, it's the little triangles there. Plasma caster, Lows 3 to fire, uh, aim without aiming. Hold charge, lock to a target and flick crater damage, okay. Ooh! Because I have weapon energy. Oh god, that's pretty wild. Weapons will recharge automatically in this area. Need to recharge plasma caster mines from energy sources. Lock, left shift to cancel before releasing, okay, so if I charge up, can cancel it with that, okay. I like the auto aim, that's fun. I like that it ripped his face off, that's fun. Of this game, wasn't rated as the worst week of the Alien franchise, I have no idea, I'm enjoying it. If people rate this as the worst game in the Aliens franchise, they have bad taste. Yeah, no, this is overall pretty damn good. How's it going, space? You're doing well. I would say Aliens Colonial Marines is probably the, the worst game in the Aliens franchise. This has actually been pretty damn good so far. Left shift under focus mode and... Highlight jump markers. Ooh! I'm gonna continue Predator for a little bit, because I wanna, I feel like we gotta get camouflage, right? There's no way they're gonna let me play as the Predator and I don't get camouflage. Like, that would be insane. Was that the one I killed in the story that I was playing? Oh no, this is before the story starter, because we haven't blown that up yet. Wait. I'm doing alright, I've been sick for the last week, which hasn't been fun, but... I'm feeling a little better now. Mostly better now. Did the Predator start, yeah, I only did like 1 mission as the Alien, because I think you kinda get the, get the point. The Alien seems like it's gonna have a lot less, like... Like, you're gonna get your base, I mean, unless I'm wrong, but I feel like in Predator for the Alien, you're gonna get, like, your... You can run around on walls and stab people and jump at them from the shadows. And that's, that's pretty much your, your game, which is fun, and it plays super well. Um... Whereas Predator is like, I haven't gotten camouflage yet, I feel like they've gotta give you camouflage, right? All the stories interconnect, yeah, I like that, like, it's all taking place, like, overlapping, that's kinda cool. This actually reminds me a bit of like how, um, Half-Life 1 and then, uh, Opposing Force and Blue Shift. All kinda interconnected with each other, but in this game, you're playing as, you know, enemies, which is cool. I guess in Opposing Force, you were playing as an enemy. Okay... Z-zoom function. Ooh! Activate cloaking device. Okay. Oh, okay, I'm cloaked now. Let's get outta here for a second. Okay... Let's get down to here. This is more like it, I'm liking this. Yeah, this leaping from like... Predator's definitely the coolest class to play, oh, for sure. It's like, just hiding in the shadows and leaping around and ambushing people, that's what's up. Ah, okay, okay. So we got turrets, those are gonna be able to see me, probably. Distraction stealth to eliminate them. Well, I mean... This guy's about to have a bad day. Press E? Wait, what? Oh! I can like, play voice clips of Marines speaking? Not gonna lie, I don't remember that being a thing that the Predator could do. Yeah, I remember this, but, whatever, I'll take it. Uh, can I distract this guy again? Okay. Can I get this guy to come over here and like, just jump down onto this tree on top of him? Did I just pull that guy's head out through his chest? By grabbing his spine and then pulling it inwards, oh my god? That's amazing. Oh, that's awesome. Okay. I, I dig it. Let's go see what we can do about these, uh, Marines over here, right? Okay, if I order you to like, go over here... And then I go over here... And I disconnect your spine... And then disappear into the trees. Nice, okay, we're good. Training power nodes restores your energy. Oh, I see. Alright, I have a gun. Forgot about that. Who needs a gun when I can do all this cool stuff? What kind of loser plays Predator with a gun? This is way cooler. Okay, and then we just, yeah, just keep going. Blam, okay, where are we, what's happening? Hello? Oh, I was supposed to be going the other way. Thankfully, I have a sprint button. On cue. Aw... Now what? This is where I just came from. Okay, again, you're telling me to go here. Oh, there's a dead Predator here, I see. Because there's a, there's a Xenomorph stalking me. Oh, they don't show up! They don't have heat signatures. Hmm. That's a problem. Oh god, where are they? Oh, god! Wait, I need to do a grab attack on one of these guys, that's gotta happen. Yeah, you know, without the motion tracker, this is actually significantly harder than it is as a human. Like, the motion tracker gives the Marines a huge advantage here. Can they see me? Yes. What am I supposed to do here? Okay, wait, grab him? Break his spine? Oh, that's awesome. Oh, these are actually really tough. It's actually also really disorienting, the fact that you like, when you snap. Ah, I'm dead. Okay. It's actually really tough. Yeah, okay. Whatever. I think I'm good there. We've shown off all three of the gameplay modes. I'm assuming there was like PvP, right? Like, there's this multiplayer. There's... I could join a ranked match? This is the only way to earn XP? What do you do with XP? If I just quick match? Begin quick match? How long do you think I'll be here for? Because I'm guessing it's gonna be quite a while. Something tells me there aren't a lot of active games of Alien vs Predator going on in the world at the moment. One player in game waiting for seven more players. Oh, Jesus Christ. So that would be me is the one player. Uh, now if we can just get seven more people in the world to connect... Um, we'll be fine and we can play a ranked game of Aliens vs Predator. Predators. This is horribly named. It's Aliens vs Predators vs Colonial Marines. Clearly. But, that said, this has actually been very fun. I'm a little annoyed you have to have eight people to play. Yeah, we'll leave quick match. I don't think we're gonna find a quick match. Player match. Create game... wait, browse games? Browse filters, any. Okay, there's no one playing, would you believe? Um, if I create a game... Maximum players was eighteen? Are you out of your goddamn mind? Yeah, hold up. Create this. Can I just go in? I wanna see like... You are a... Okay, so you can pick what you are. No, no, I don't wanna be a Marine. Can I be a Xenomorph? Yeah, okay, I can be an Alien. Warrior Dome, Number Six, Warrior Ridge, Praetorian, Net Head. Oh, interesting. Okay, so there are actually different Aliens. Do you have to like rank up through ranked matches to unlock the different skins? You probably do. Oh god. So those are just impossible to unlock these days, then? And yeah, I see the Predator Alien is in there. Interesting. Oh, I could invite my friends to this group. Alright, well, we're gonna call it apart there. Thank you all for joining. I've actually had a lot of fun with this. And Techno Ghosty, thank you very much for redeeming the points redeemed to make this happen. Tomorrow Lock Through Story. Okay, cool. Okay, that's fair. This is actually really fun. I'm probably going to end up like completing this in my free time. Maybe I'll come back and do it on stream? I don't know. I don't necessarily want to do it right now. I wanted to do Alien Isolation as my Halloween horror game. And so, I think I'm gonna jump into that next. Not like right now, but the next time I stream, which will likely be either tomorrow or the day after, um, will be Alien Isolation. Um, but I thought this would be a fun point. Techno Ghosty actually redeemed this like a month ago. Um, but I was like, well, I wanna hold it for October. And then, the start of October, uh, I was like caught up in Fallout 4 and some other stuff, and Diablo 4 had this expansion launch, and I was... Techno Ghosty was out of town for a little bit, and then I got horribly sick for a week and I couldn't stream, and so this is like, I'm finally able to catch this up, and now I wanna start getting into Alien Isolation, I think now, is the next thing. Because I've never actually finished that game. Um, and then at the end of the month, Red Dead Redemption launches, and there's the World of Warcraft 20th Anniversary event going on, like, starting in a week. And there's like Fallout 4 Survival Mode that I've got going on. There's just a ton of stuff happening right now. It's way too busy. They need to stop releasing video games forever, uh, so that I can catch up on all of my backlog. But there's, real quick, a look at this. I'm having a lot of fun with it. I'm probably gonna end up, you will likely be seeing this again at some point. This might be like another one-off next time, just like bored and wanna kill some time. Um, but for now, I'm gonna call it apart. I'm gonna get myself some sleep. There's the social media links, the YouTube archive, and the, uh... No more video games ever. Correct. That's what I need. I need them to stop releasing video games permanently until I have caught up on all the video games in my Steam library. The, uh, what am I at right now? What's my Steam library looking like? Uh, if I go to Profile, it'll tell me, won't it? Yeah, I've got 796 games in my inventory, so I'm gonna need to stop releasing video games until I have completed all 800 video games in my Steam library. Uh, is the plan. And I have 1,676 DLCs owned, so, until we've got all of that done, just no more. Um, but yeah, for now, we're gonna call it apart. I'm gonna get myself some sleep. Thank you all for joining. It was great playing this. I am looking forward to being back with Alien Isolation, uh, either tomorrow or the day after. Just, uh, messing around with that, seeing if I can get through. Oh god, oh that. I am falling apart here. I've been sleeping far too much this week because of how sick I was, and so now I am like not adjusted to not sleeping all day. I was laughing at my job. Um, I work in a hospital, and I do a lot of walking, and I get usually like, uh, on a good day, I'll get like... Usually between 15,000 and 17,000 steps, uh, in a day, like, for walking. Um, and it was really funny, because I have like my step tracker on my phone, and for the week I was sick. I worked Monday, and you could see, like, if you look at my tracker, there's like a chart, and it's like, Monday, 17,000 steps, Tuesday, 20 steps. Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, like, I think the highest was 300 steps one day, and that was the day we went to look at the Northern Lights. We went to see the Aurora Borealis, and I got 300 steps in while doing that. And then, and then you go, I think we went to the grocery store too. Uh, and then you go to like, I'm back to work, Saturday, 17,000 steps. It's just so stupid. Like, I have been so dead this last week. All I did was sleep and drink water, and then cough. But, I'm feeling mostly better now. I still probably sound a little froggy, but I am feeling mostly fine. So we'll be back playing some Alien Isolation, getting in with that. Uh, if I can speed order one, I might try to set up like a heart rate monitor thing. Uh, XanVi sent me a link for how to set up a heart rate monitor on stream. So we can observe my heart rate not moving, because horror games don't usually do much to me, um, as far as like elevating my heart rate. So I'm curious to see if it's gonna actually do anything or not. It'll be a fun experiment to have going, uh, if I can set that up. But I need to order the hardware, and I don't know if I wanna order that right now or how quickly I can get it here, so we'll see what's going on with that. But for now, I'm gonna go get myself some sleep. Thank you all for joining. I will see you next time. Bye for now.